Sandy, would you call, please? Councilperson Bruni?
Here.
Bruni? Harry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Here.
McGinty?
Here.
Do any of the council members have any conflict of interest on any of the items on our agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Okay. We'll move on to item number three, Consent Agenda. A is approval of agenda. B is the approval of the amendments of the August 12th, 2014 council meeting. C, receipts and disbursements. D, consideration of resolution number 2014-16 entitled a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with Loring Hospital and fixing a date for a hearing on the proposed issuance of hospital facility revenue refunding bonds, Loring Hospital project in one or more series. I would suspect that there would be some conversation around a couple of things. Curtis?
Could you review for us what this resolution is and what it does?
Back in 2000, well, it's setting a public hearing. Back in 2007, the hospital borrowed city bonding capacity for the purposes of borrowing money towards their building development they did out here. They are now seeking to refinance those bonds because, of course, the bond market is much different than it was in 2007. And so this would be the first step in doing that, setting a public hearing date. I'm sure there will be more communication after that from the hospital.
There'll be further discussion on that.
In the interest of clarity, can we pull this off of the consent agenda and just explain it and add it to the agenda later?
What did you, what did you, what did you want to do, what do you want to do first?
Can we, can we just pull it off the consent agenda so, so we can actually discuss it and explain it maybe later?
If that's what you want to do, you can do that.
Well, I already know what it is. You were involved the first time down.
What, can we discuss it right now?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, just explain what, they, they, they used our bonding.
Yes, they used our bonding capacity back in 2006, mostly in 2007, in order to borrow money for the purposes of their improvement. The, of course, the bond rates are much different now. So in order to refinance only, what they end up doing when you refinance in the bond market is you sell your existing bond, you buy new bonds at a lower rate. So that, in essence, that's what they're wanting to do. In order to do that, they have to go through and ask for permission from the city to borrow our bonding capacity again on a short-term basis in order to do so. So this would impact us through June of next year. But just like in 2007, when it was done, it basically goes off the books in the same year. It does not ever show as our outstanding debt to the state.
But it affects our bonding ability until?
For short term, yes.
Curtis, please. How much does it affect the bonding ability by? How much of an impact does it make on our bonding ability?
Well, it could, it'd be quite substantial. I mean, it'd basically take up our bonding capacity.
All of it?
Yes.
Until, okay.
Through June.
Till June of?
Couple of questions. Okay, so do we have the old and new bonding both concurrently, thus taking up the complete bonding ability?
No, no, the, the old one went off our books back in June of 2008. So, I mean, it hasn't shown there since that time.
Okay.
So this one would be basically following the same procedure. This is about the same time period as?
In essence, it's new. It's really, you say refinancing, but in essence, it's really a new time period.
It's, it's a new bond for?
Right.
Yes, yeah. I mean, if you were buying a house, this would be refinancing a house, a mortgage.
You call it refinancing, but to us, it's actually setting a new time period to the city.
Sure. And since it's borrowing ours, it requires a public hearing in order to do so, and then there's certain publication, you also have to be followed and a resolution passed in order for them to proceed with this. The paperwork you'll see within your packet for this was presented, all of the information we received on this has been funnelled through Dorsey and Whitney. So it was the bonding age of the first pipeline.
Talk about the negative impact it could have. If we, are we thinking of any projects that we might not this for? Is there any concern at all?
The only risk is if we have a significant financial outlay between now and June of next year, where we had planned on using our own bonding capacity for that.
And there's nothing that's been talked about or planned?
Hopefully, anything that we would plan, we would, of course, be able to arrange it in a way so that we wouldn't have to bond until after that June deadline.
I think that's important to visit about.
How would, how would this affect possible street projects for next year?
Well, if you're in a scenario where you wouldn't break ground until April or May, your first bills aren't going to be due till June, and usually, your first months of bills are going to be more engineering-based costs. So your first cost, major construction cost, would likely be July. So that'd be about the same time you would be doing the bonding process. And, of course, this is all speculative at this point.
Right, I mean, I just, I mean, I don't want to tie our hands to say that we can't possibly do anything infrastructure-wise until 2016 because?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the point I was trying to?
Have they ever done this before?
In 2006 and '07.
When they did their additions?
This is a refinancing of that, to give you a?
That's what this is, is refinancing?
Yeah, a refinancing. Because the interest rates are much more advantageous for them today than they were in '07.
And then disappears from our bonding capacity when?
June.
Of 2015?
June 30th of 2015, then?
Yep.
So, Adam, I'm curious, did the hospital administrator or one of the board members speak to you about this, or how did this all come about?
No, this was communicated to us last week, was it? By Dorsey and Whitney. We haven't received any communication from the hospital at this point.
Okay, they're serious about it.
We were instructed, we were asked by Dorsey and Whitney to take the first step, setting the public hearing.
You have any other questions?
As of right now, all you're doing is setting a public hearing. There would be several steps.
But, yeah, we're not voting on anything. We're just setting a time and a date for a public hearing.
I would assume the hospital would plan on attending during the public hearing to answer further questions.
Curtis?
Curtis, please. What is our bonding capacity right now?
The exact number, I could not tell you. It's, it's based on a percentage of your overall taxable value.
Within, within a million?
I want to say it's within, probably close to 3 million, between 2.5, 3 million. And that's for general obligation purposes. Remember that finance, or loans based on revenue bonds are not incorporated into that. They aren't limited to that 5 percent role.
Did they use up our complete bonding capacity in 2006?
Yes.
Was it about the same amount?
Well, that would have been the full amount. Now, of course, this is seven years later.
Sure.
So the way that they, there's a way that, since it's not, there is a way that they can do it, and Dorsey and Whitney processes it, where they can exceed the 5 percent for the purposes that they're using it for. Because this will exceed the 5 percent. That's why I say for our purposes, it's a maximizing. It, it limits us from being able to do any other bonding to that period. But it's in excess of the 5 percent limit that we are, we are allowed to do ourselves.
You know, I guess one of my concerns is, I'd want to hear from, you know, the administrator and/or board members, you know, if there's any chance whatsoever of this, you know, them not making good on the bonds, if it exposes us at all. Whenever you bond, there's always, there's always some risk. I mean, it's not zero. You know, and I would just hate to see us jeopardized. And I certainly want some assurance coming directly from them, the fact that they haven't even approached this yet. They've bonded me here about it through Dorsey and Whitney. I just, you know, would like some reassurances from them, I mean, to put the city at any exposure at all, even if it's very small.
Would they not be at whatever date we set this public hearing?
I would assume that they would plan on?
We would ask them if they didn't notify us.
Yeah. I'll remind the council, our step tonight is setting a public hearing. It's, there'll be further details and further information being spread at that time. You can't do anything else till we set a public hearing.
When would you recommend the hearing be set, the next meeting?
I actually said a date within the paperwork.
September 23rd, I believe?
I think it actually will be published twice before the meeting.
On page four, the first paragraph says, "September 23rd." How would move passage of consent agenda?
Setting, you want to, you want to put that statement in, don't you, setting a date?
No.
It's a part of the consent.
All right, okay.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda. Are there any other further questions or comments?
Curtis, please. Would you, are you able to tell if, if everything goes smoothly, and the two things are published correctly, and there's a hearing on the 23rd, when the city would lose its bonding capacity to the hospital? On what day? Would it be 10 days after, would it be immediately?
It'd be written out in all of the paperwork. As of right now, what I have as far as information goes is actually covered on here.
And just to clarify a couple of things, when Dorsey and Whitney called, they were willing to talk and be here to answer any questions via phone if they wanted. From what I understand, and Adam can check with them further, it does not take all the bonding capacity a second time like it did the first time. It limits it to around a couple hundred thousand dollars as opposed to?
The number you're seeing in here is 2,075,000, and our bonding capacity is closer to 3 million. So with our outstanding debt, that would put it somewhere in a couple hundred thousand dollars would be available to us, to give you a rough idea. As far as when it would go into place, it would go into place the moment that the bonds are issued for sale, which I would guess if we approved all this, you're probably talking about a timeframe of October or November would probably be. They're pretty quick about turning all that around once the final approvals are put into place.
Do you know historic, or do you know how long the city was without bonding capacity the first time around?
It was approved in November or December of 2007, and then it would have been cleared by June of 2008.
About the same situation?
So actually, yeah, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote. Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Item number four, projects. A, Sack City Airport Improvement Project. And number one, there is consideration of approving amended Olson Associates bill in the amount of $2,275.
You might remember at the last council meeting, this all pertains to what was previously approved at the last council meeting. Upon contacting the Airport Commission and requesting that they had portion, the 5 percent portion they're responsible for, I was notified that they had already partially paid Olson for the bills. And so to clean up for the auditor's purposes, I'm asking you to approve corrected numbers. It just makes it easier for the auditor's purpose to see that the numbers match with what's actually being done. Number one, and I'll just just speak about all three of them. Number one is the, is the amount of the outstanding amount that still stands with Olson, the amount they need to be paid. Number two is our portion of the overall bill, which technically you approved last time, since we're approving everything else, it's clean to just re-approve it. And the third one is reimbursing the airport for the portion they've already paid to Olson. Then what we would end up doing is, is having, then the airport will end up cutting us a check for their $335. So there's, the 5 percents are easy and clearly identifiable to see, and the right amounts are being cut to the right location so that the auditor has no questions in this process.
Questions?
In other words, that would just balance out everything so it's defined.
Right, right. We, we would prefer, for purposes of keeping everything easy and clean for the auditor, that the, that the Airport Commission not pay these checks directly. This hasn't been a common practice for them in the past, and we've communicated to them. We don't want them to do this again.
And always runs through the city, and they don't do that.
They wouldn't.
It just makes it all clean, because as you can see, what would have happened is, is at the last council meeting, you approved cutting a check to Olson for a certain amount. Well, then the auditor's going to want a check to make sure, verify, we cut a check for that amount to Olson. When the numbers don't match, it's going to throw a red flag. Now, the auditor's going to come to us during the audit, go, these don't match, why don't they match it? Do you want the paperwork to verify how everything clears out? And so it, it just, it just muddies the waters in the process for the auditor. This cleans that up.
Can we move off of it at once, or do we have to be voted on individually?
I would prefer that you do them separately. We always try to do these projects that have federal money separately, so that there's an easily identifiable understanding of what you were approving and how you were approving.
I would move consideration of approving amended Olson Associates bill in the amount of $2,275.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve amended Olson Associates bill in the amount of $2,275. Is there any further discussion or questions? Please call for a vote. Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll make the motion to approve the city's portion in the amount of $335.
I'll second it.
Motion has, oh, yeah, motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's portion in the amount of $335. Are there any further questions or discussion around this? Would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson Bruni?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll make the motion to, for reimbursement of Sack City Municipal Airport in the amount of $4,425.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to reimburse the Sack City Airport in the amount of $4,425. Is there, are there any further questions? Would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number five, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any this evening? If not, we'll move on to six, which is continuing business, starting with A, Blue Space Creative project.
The only update I have with Blue Space is that Emily Bush contacted me this last week and notified me that either on a short-term basis or possibly even permanently, she is going to be leaving Blue Space. So we will have another rep that will be working with this. That's really the only update I have to give at this time.
Okay, item number six, B, is Chautauqua Park Improvement Update.
It's still in stasis for, we'll have it done this summer. That's all I have to share at this time.
We've got some painting to do. If anybody wants to volunteer to help find people to paint the Stone Shelter House?
Is there a certain time we have to have it done by?
Yes, we need to have it done by the granting period, so?
For January, middle of January.
So by Halloween, this has to be done.
Okay. I'm just thinking, it's been fairly cool, but I'm thinking if it, when it's not quite so, and I'll be glad to help at some point in time. Okay. Urban, six, C, is Urban Development Area Update?
I just received communication today back from Rick Hunsacker with Region 12, who is supposed to be representing at the meeting with the county. He gave me either the dates of September 9th or September 30th. I currently have communication out to Brandy Ripley and the committee members. I just sent it out this afternoon, asking if either one of those dates work for you, and so that we can coordinate with him and get on the agenda for the county.
Is it okay with, either date, okay with the county, then?
I, I was going to make sure it was okay on our side. They meet every Tuesday, Bill.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of contacting them and asking them to be on the agenda sometime between 10:00 and 11:00 that morning. But I want to make sure it works for Rick first, and then Brandy, I wanted to hit the three of you up to make sure you are available for that time, Curtis.
Okay, item number seven, I'm sorry, yes, Curtis?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry if you covered this, I just didn't catch it. Are you guys having a meeting with, with Region 12 somewhere?
You remember when we talked with the county, we talked about the next step was if they would allow us, we would set up a meeting with someone to come in and speak with them and answer their questions.
They'll come in to speak to the supervisors?
Correct.
Great, okay.
So we contacted Region 12, and Rick Hunsacker said he would represent himself as the director down there, and these were the two dates during the month of September he had available on Tuesdays at 10, between 10:00 and 11:00 to come up to those meetings.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, now we move on to seven miscellaneous. A, Chloe Wallace to address the council regarding hometown pride program. Chloe, welcome.
I'm sure you've read the paper or heard from others about this hometown pride program. And the main purpose of it is to build stronger communities. As you know, there's a lot of communities in Iowa that the appearance is just not what it needs to be. In this hometown pride program, I believe, is something that can help not only appearance, but also just strengthen a community in general. I've met with the county supervisors, and they are all for this program. And I've also met with a couple other councils that have been very positive about it, too. I met with Jerry Schnepp, who is the director for Home, Keep Iowa Beautiful, earlier this summer, and had a, to our conversation with him about this program. And I seemed really, I just seemed really positive, and especially I've talked to Tom from Pocahontas County. They've had a lot of luck with it as well. What it all entails is, overall, the program is $80,000. $60,000 of that is paid for by Keep Iowa Beautiful, which means $20,000 is the county is responsible for as a whole. Well, it comes with that is a coach that comes into your county and has monthly meetings with each community. So each community has their own individual branding, even though it is a county program. It also comes with a database that's full of grants, which is the big thing. So far, I think Pocahontas County has received about $450,000 worth of grants, full, which I think about 55 grants total, and that was in February. And I know they're still applying, just going into their third year now. So that coach would come and meet with every community, which would be made up of about six or eight individuals, and they'd go to each community and kind of talk about the strengths, weaknesses, and kind of pinpoint like what they feel like should be worked on. It's always good to bring someone in that is new to the area, that isn't far around, because they're seeing, you know, maybe not for the first time, but they're not seeing the same thing every day like we are. But, yeah, overall, I've gotten a good response with this. I think it is just something, especially after seeing Blue Space and all of the comments and reading all of that, I know appearance was mentioned a lot, I mean, just community pride was mentioned a lot, and how some people think that we don't even have that still, which is kind of sad to see, but.
Chloe, I think at a meeting a year, I suppose it was at least a year ago, at one of our league meetings, the gentleman was there, and he was telling about this. Do any of you remember that meeting?
Yeah, it was in April.
He was very impressive, speaking about it, and all the wonderful things it had created. So am I understanding you to say that this is funded by the county, then?
No, so?
I thought, I heard you say 60,000 by the, 20,000 by the county and 60,000 by?
20,000 would have to be somehow compiled, whether it's the county as a whole, or like SETD as a whole, or communities each putting in a little bit of money, which I've talked to Tom and I think are in Fremont County, too, and also Pocahontas County, and they did it many different ways. They also looked to like their utilities for getting money, so it just can be made up as long as they have the $20,000.
Are you asking, I know you're just telling us about it, but at some point in time, will it need to be on the agenda? Will you have like a firm idea of what the city's commitment would be to this?
After, there is a meeting on September 30th that anyone is welcome to. It's at 7:00 o'clock, and hopefully no later, going until 8:30, at the Waller Community Center. And there, Jerry from Keep Iowa Beautiful and Tom, who is the economic developer in Pocahontas County, will be there to talk. And so I'm hoping after that, seeing what overall the community, each community is thinking, that then I'll have a good idea of what that will be then.
So I see in here it says the cost is 80,000, and you said Pocahontas has been doing it for three years. So we'd be looking at a three-year commitment of $20,000 from this, each year for this consortium.
And they said, I think, you can go up to five years if you want.
And that's a combination of monies.
Right, I mean, it's not 20,000 from each community, it's 20,000.
Right, I mean, from Sack County, then we're looking at a yearly obligation of $20,000 for?
And Pocahontas County says they have had no problem. They've had, as they, as the communities have seen the results, they, more of the communities are just wanting to even put in more money, and even individuals also.
What kind of results are they seeing, do you know?
Well, they're not only doing just in their communities, but they're also doing rural, working with their conservation. They said that their youth are getting more involved, like, they start off as a sophomore, even as a senior, they're still getting involved with everything. So I think even that is a big thing. Just appearances, too. I know Fonda, they did a whole playground, and they had their youth actually pick out the playground, you know, so getting involved that way. Streetscapes, I know they've seen results of that, too, and just appearances in general.
I think one of the big things I remember him talking about is how your volunteerism gets just greater and greater because you're getting more people actively involved in decision-making and what they think and their opinions and so on and so forth. And actually, you have somebody to help you. You make the plan. A lot of times, we make the plan, but we don't get it carried through.
And that's what?
And what he does is coaches the way to get the things done.
And that's what Fremont County said exactly, is they said so many times that they've made plans over so many years, and they've just been sitting there. And now people are seeing results, and now they're seeing results, there's more leadership coming forward from people that they never thought would come forward and volunteer with anything. I, that's a big thing I think overall.
You mentioned grants, too.
$450,000 worth of grants?
Mm-hmm. So grants for what kinds of stuff?
Appearance, like I said, like the thing, like, that's the main thing, is they're getting so many, that's a big part of the hometown pride, is them applying for grants and getting them.
Do we have a good coalition of this group to go to that meeting on September 30th?
Again, Tom can probably answer more in detail exactly what they've all accomplished, too.
This is also mentioned in our, this current month's magazine, too.
I can't, it might be too late, I'm doing a program for the Iowa State Bank's Friendship Club that night, I know, but.
I just would encourage anybody that could possibly make it to go, because that's where you're really going to hear from the horse's mouth what's going on.
September 30th.
Seven p.m.
Seven.
Thank you, Chloe. I appreciate you coming and telling us about it.
How would you see this interfacing with the Blue Space project that we're currently at the table?
Well, I know we're going to the second phase, and I guess I don't know what that all entails, but isn't a lot of it planning, kind of?
Planning, yeah.
Visioning and stuff like that. I believe this can become very, so I'm talking to Shaylor about this, too, is they have a whole visioning program, and their big thing is coming up with the money to see that vision come through. And I think for them, just like for us, that can be a big benefit for us as well.
They, they don't make the plan, they help us initiate the plan and figure out where we can get grants and things to do to projects that we want.
Right. And then it's up to each individual town to fill out the grants and license.
You know, I noticed that September 30th is on a Tuesday, so it'd be right after following or meeting.
No, that would be, that would be a fifth Tuesday, so we don't have?
Oh, it's a fifth Tuesday.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay, Chloe, yes?
I'm just wondering, is there a limit to the type of programs? Does it have to be something that's being built? Something being brought down?
Vertical infrastructure?
Brought down? That I do not know. That would be a good question for that county meeting. I didn't really ask into too much detail about that.
Thank you.
I know it's, I know we talked a lot about housing, too, and maybe, yeah, so maybe in that way, too, being brought down and whatnot, maybe, I don't know. But, yeah, 30th, that'd be a good question.
Thank you very much. Okay, seven miscellaneous, B, is the second meeting of ordinance number 2014-26, entitled in order to amend the code of ordinance of the city of Sack City, Iowa, by amendment provisions pertaining to chapter 136 sidewalk regulations.
I presented this in your packet along with one amendment to the I presented this in your packet along with one amendment to the original first reading, and that was the inclusion of the block definition, is the included.
Is there any discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2014-260 in ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sack City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter 136 Sidewalk Regulations.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2014-260, the ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sack City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter 136 Sidewalk Regulations. Do you have any further questions or comments? Curtis?
Has there been any input from the community since the first reading?
I had one person just simply asking me questions about subdivisions. That's, that's been about it.
Was it a builder?
No. That was just somebody in the public just asking a general question.
Thank you.
By approving this, we're also then approving the map that was attached to it first.
Correct.
No further questions?
We need to have that.
We did, we do have, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Councilperson Brandy?
Yes.
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Seven miscellaneous, C, pardon me?
Can we wait a second, after reading of this?
Do you feel like it would be appropriate, Adam?
Yeah.
If nobody's commented to this point?
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay. No?
Is it controversial enough that we might do the third reading, or is it really not an issue at this time?
There doesn't seem to be...
Apparently it hasn't been for parts, right?
It's ran in the paper for a while now, I do, so. I don't see an issue with that.
I would move that we waive the third reading of ordinance number 2014-260.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to waive the third reading of ordinance number 2014-260, the ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sack City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter 136 Sidewalk Regulations. Any other comments? Curtis?
When is this going to affect, then?
When it's published.
When it's published? That would be Tuesday?
It would be next, the week from today.
Week from today, thank you.
You'll have it tomorrow.
Ms. Andy, would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay. D, committee and department here reports.
No, we're going to see.
Oh, sorry. I scratched out right over. Seven miscellaneous, C, is the second reading of ordinance number 2014-261 entitled in ordinance amending the code of ordinance of Sack City, Iowa, 2014 by adding Chapter 49 Social Host Ordinance.
To clarify, there was a final copy sitting at your desk tonight. It had bold highlighted what had been changed or included since the last one. As you can see, it's an inclusion of the controlled substance stuff that I was asked to, to recommend. And then there was just one little, one or two little grammatical things that had been corrected. Attorneys do make grammatical errors.
I have a question. Is there, are our surrounding counties, are they involved in this? The surrounding counties around us, like Calhoun County, have they done this? And written in ordinance like this?
Diane Barry, New Opportunities. I have a map of all the counties that have specific ordinances in place, but there was a state social host bill that was passed, and effective July 1st of this year, signed by Governor Branstad, and it's criminal. So, there is an overarching state law and there's around 24, 25 counties out of the 99 that have specific ordinances in place.
I just was curious about that. Okay. Any other discussion?
I would make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2014-261 entitled in ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sack City, 2014 by adding Chapter 49 Social Host Ordinance. Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2014-261, the ordinance amending the code of ordinance of Sack City, Iowa, 2014 by adding Chapter 49 Social Host Ordinance. Are there any other discussion or comments?
I think the changes that were made was appropriate regarding people's...
Item two.
How many cities currently have a social host?
Wish I, I really wish I had that map with me, because there are several cities that have ordinances on top of countywide specific ordinances. And Iowa Department of Public Health has a really nice color-coded map to show you all the specific ordinances each county has in regards to social hosting. So, what I could do is I could email a copy to Adam Ledford tomorrow morning and show that that's available.
And you, remember, this is presented to us as a recommendation from the chief of police.
And this makes ours more stringent than what the county or the state would be.
Well, not the states, but the counties.
We're talking civil and criminal.
Yeah. I mean, but, but more inclusive in terms of the states doesn't cover controlled substances.
I believe we're correct.
So in that regard, ours is more stringent, although, although it is civil and not criminal.
Is there any further discussion? I'm calling for a vote. Councilperson Brandy?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Do you want to do the third reading? Have you had any comments at all?
I would have no issues with recommending this for, or for waiting.
I'll make the motion to waive the third reading of the ordinance number 2014-261.
Seconded. Motion has been made and seconded to waive the third reading of ordinance number 2014-261, the ordinance amending the code of ordinance of Sack City, Iowa, 2014 by adding Chapter 49 Social Host Ordinance. Is there any additional comments or questions? Would you call for a vote?
Councilperson Brandy?
I will. Diane Barry, New Opportunities, I will email that map out to you, just for that information.
Okay. Would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we will do the committee and department here reports.
Thank you to Diane for going to bring it forward. I think this is a good addition, just a, if there's an incident or accident that just happened this past week, you know, that might bring that in further, you know, to mind.
Be prevented, it's like an action.
So, hopefully, yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we will go to the committee and department here reports. I'll just tell you that we had a final meeting of the people that helped with the summer lunch program, and they all voted to do it again and try to include more families and figure out a way to get more people that are of need involved. And all of the people that worked this summer signed up to take the same days next summer. And we have, we've gotten our money from the state. We still have some money coming because we do get reimbursed. So we're in good standing to start out the next summer. We do have money and the coffees to begin again.
I can report on the Chamber Freedom Fest. They're moving forward with it and there will be a ballgame. There will be bands. There will be food. There will be a beer garden and it'll be quite a celebration.
The ballgame will be on TV?
And the ballgame will be on TV, yes.
If you call that a ballgame.
Hey, careful.
That's under lens.
Do we, I assume we need to approve some kind of...
They will have it on the agenda. They know that and they will be having it on the agenda.
And the alcohol permit, most evidence.
They are hoping to be ready by this meeting, but they knew there is an outside chance they may be waiting. There's another council meeting between now and then.
Brandy wanted to have it, but there was some...
She was running into, she was running into some snags or something, wasn't she?
Yeah, because it came back with a price more than she had checked with other communities for the insurance. And the insurance was like twice as high as the other communities had told her about. So she was looking into that to see if she could figure out how they could get it for that and she was going to have to pay this. So, that's why.
Oh, just to bring you up to date, today, the city crew worked on repairing a storm sewer blowout, which actually took place in my yard. However, I didn't have any particular issue with them doing it right away. Another landowner that has a rental unit was having backups into his basement. So they did work on that. Hopefully, the, that storm sewer around the Gishweiler and 9th or 10th Street area, on over to the church, hopefully works better. We'll keep our fingers crossed that we don't have another blowout.
There'll be two more phases to that before it's all over with. One, we'll be replacing the line that goes just slightly into the golf course over to the box that's just south of your property. And then the, the other phase that's still will be done is fixing a couple of c-calls up in French training property, just up the block. And, and in doing that, we're going to do a little bit of an exploratory dig. Because one thing that has been somewhat intriguing, if city things can get intriguing, has been what we've found as we've been down there. We now can identify at least two, and we believe there are three lines that run through there. One's private and two that are public. So, we're kind of getting our head wrapped around where our lines run and exactly what's going on inside of those lines.
Steve Irwin and I presented a $3,000 check to the Sack Community Center from the Sack Community Foundation this afternoon toward the elevator, which is up and running in its past inspection. They are still probably in the vicinity of $6,000 short of having that project paid for, but it's being used. Tax deductible donations are still available, are still welcomed through the Sack Community Foundation, Iowa State Bank, C. Steve Irwin or C. Annett. And that money will funnel to them, but that one is tax deductible for sure. And they've got a cool lift that gets people into the pool and hopefully getting some, a partnership with the hospital for some of their physical therapy and that kind of thing happening at the community center, which would be a great step in getting it a little more financially independent. So we don't have to, not that I object to keeping, putting money into it. It would be nice to have it independent so we could put our money elsewhere, too.
I would tell you that I spoke with Pam Kyle today and he said that elevator is really being used by the elderly.
Yeah. And just another plug for Kyle, what's his last name?
Soder.
Soder. You know, it's been just really a go-getter and kind of an inspiration, I think, up there. It's really been a real proponent for the rec center up there. So, hopefully, this is kind of the start of one, even more improvements looking forward and, you know, for other things to come with his leadership there.
They got a donation to paint the gym. They got money as a memorial to someone to paint the gym and they're hoping to get that done, but he said it may not get done. They want to have a grand reopening and he was hoping to have it done, but he's not sure. And they are going to sponsor a junior high homecoming dance. And they want to do more things for youth, give them things to do. They have a trial membership for $9.95 a month right now. And it was talked about every once in a while, just having a Saturday that was open, any kids that wanted to come. Did you know about that?
I have, I looked the name up.
So, there's a lot of things. That's all I meant to say was there's a lot of things going on and there's a lot of things getting cleaned up. My husband...
Well, it's exciting to see those kind of things and I think it's important for us to build on them as a community and try and keep building on the positives that we have going on here.
The membership is up quite a bit. So, we should thank Committee Sam. He's doing a good job.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Would you call for a vote? Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.